Twelve hundred dollars for a commercial survey. And then a residential survey was between five hundred and eight hundred dollars. Depending on how much land you wanted the planning commission to survey, what we thought we might could get done in a year, we thought it would be about a hundred thousand dollars.
I'd like to see documentation back on that. I've noticed that we, the --
Point of order?
The city?
Yes.
Point of order?
Yes.
That's the opinion of one council person? That's not the directive from the council to instruct her to accomplish a task? That has to come from all of us.
Be as ordered by the council.
Oh, well, I guess if everybody doesn't want me to have the information, then that's nothing new at this table. I notice you, the planning commission is working on several different things that, well, I'm not sure who directed the planning commission to do all these different things that the planning commission is doing, but this is something that this table did specifically request for the planning commission to do. And so, it's just, I find it interesting that something that this table has specifically asked you all to take on, you kind of have, I understand what you're asking for. I'm not sure if that's what you need. I think that if you used as much imagination and wherewithal and going forward with a project as you have on a lot of these other projects that you've done so well on, I think that you could probably at least get a start on figuring out where there's public properties that are being encroached upon. But that's just my opinion. And I had really hoped for you all to soldier up and take this on. But if it's beyond your abilities, then I guess I'll have to just understand that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Pownell. Go ahead, please. That was part of the discussion whenever this was sent to the planning commission of whether or not it was even viable. I make a motion that the planning commission give a report back to council by the next meeting of the information that Ms. Blankenship was just telling us about for further action.
Second.
There's more discussion. Mr. Berry, do you have your hand up?
Yes.
We have a motion on the table, don't we? Can just --
We have discussion.
We got discussion, too.
Can we have discussion?
Go ahead.
We're going back to the same argument that I was making before. I don't know whether I threw out the hundred thousand dollars, but I certainly said that it was going to take a surveyor to legally tell us what we're encroaching on. I would think that some of, anybody who's been involved in real estate would realize that you don't know what an encroachment is until it's surveyed. And the only way that the planning commission can find out what the encroachments are into any city property is to have a legal description of the meets and bounds of that property, of all the properties in Eureka Springs. And that's not just the commercial, that's the residential. Because many of these issues have come up, have been residential, not just commercial. I think Ms. Blankenship has done her due diligence in telling us and giving us a report from the planning commission that in their estimate and in going through their, trying to figure out what exactly it would do, it was going to cost about a hundred thousand dollars. And again, I know where some of the people are coming from on this, but this is something that is not some, an item that comes up, and as Ms. Blankenship pointed out, but maybe once a year, and probably not even that, I mean, over the last hundred years, it was one per year, over that. So again, I think we're just wasting the time. I think the planning commission has done a good job, and they come up with the items that we've been, that are needing to be addressed, such as the dwelling units a weekly, you know, all of this. And this is the items that --
Point of order. Say your point of order.
It's not related to the motion and the second on the floor.
Ironically, one of the other members said the same things.
Okay. All right. Any further, Mr. Pownell?
We had two members of council request this be put on the agenda and that a report be given back. I think for the sake of the city continuity, historical record, whatever you want to call it, instead of glossing it over in meeting minutes, I don't think there'd be too much to ask the planning commission just to give us a brief written report of that agenda item.
Point of order. He's not making it point of order.
All right.
Can we get back to the discussion?
There's still room for discussion because that's procedure. I mean, if we won't follow procedure, then there's, there is a motion, there is a second. There was discussion. You're discussing. You called it point of order because they didn't like what you were discussing. You called it point of order because you didn't like what he was discussing.
Point of order, that's your opinion.
No, ma'am, that's the facts.
That he, that he called point of order.
Did I miss something here?
Excuse me. Then he called point of order because --
I have to rule on your point of order.
Because he didn't --
She's not been recognized.
Because he didn't like.
Okay. And you haven't been recognized.
What was said.
Okay.
Then I'll put my hand up.
Ms. Lindt.
It was your opinion that Mr. Pownell said what he said because you just said because he didn't like what was said. And that is your opinion, and I can read it to you now.
Oh, ma'am, you don't have to.
In the Roberts Rule, that if you're going to give an opinion, you must step down as chairperson and turn it over to a substitute chairperson.
Okay, I don't find any of the Lydia any point of order, because that's exactly what the man said. We can go back and read it from the minutes if you want to. Ms. Bell.
This is just a question, and I'm having to give it to the floor after I'm done asking it, but I would like an answer. Did we, did you rule on Mr. Berry's point of order?
I was trying to, and she held her hand up, and we were trying to get all this point of orders taken into fact when indeed it was just discussion. And Mr. Berry has every right to discuss it, as everyone else does. So unless Mr. Weaver can come up something to the contrary, I think we were still working on discussion.
Okay, then does Mr. Pownell still have the floor?
Do I still have the floor?
Mr. Berry still has the floor.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I think the planning commission is doing a good job, and I don't know whether or not they need to come back to this council with another report after she just gave us a report that I'm sure our clerk will have written in the minutes, giving that report of a hundred thousand dollar cost. So I don't need, we need to go on with this anymore.
No, let's go.
May I direct some questions to the city attorney?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
The city owns property, yes?
Yes.
Some of that is green spaces, yes?
What we have called green spaces in our ordinance is yes.
We have, do we have no idea where these green spaces are? Are they just everywhere? Or do we have titles on them? Or do we have surveys on them? Or do we just presume or assume where these are? Or do we know where those are?
As I understand it, in a lot of instances, we have documentation off of centerline surveys. In other instances, there are full surveys of the particular descriptions. If there are descriptions, but a lot of times, a hundred years ago, descriptions unfortunately were not as thorough and accurate as descriptions are now used by modern survey techniques and modern survey equipment. It was not uncommon a hundred years ago to say fifty feet from the big oak tree. You don't see that in legal descriptions today. They're much more accurate because of, partly because a lot of it is now capable even with satellite mapping and things of that nature. You will find, having litigated cases over the last twenty years, that a lot of old surveys overlap, particularly when you're dealing with surveys that have not been redone in the last forty or fifty years, particularly in a town like this, where a lot of the surveying was done with very up and down terrain. And so I think you would probably find that their hundred thousand dollar estimate is very conservative when you would try to lay this out and see what's encroached.
So, so right now, people could go out and encroach on any of our green spaces, and we would have no way to know if they were encroaching on our green spaces until they did a survey and come and said, "Well, gee whiz, guess what? Ten years ago, we encroached on your property, and now we actually gave us that property because you guys didn't know what you had, and so we're taking it away from you."
That is not correct in all aspects, because you are discounting the fact that we have building officials and departments, who's part of their job is to review building plans, site plans, depending on the type of structure that is being constructed. That should catch, in the modern sense, most future encroachments. I won't tell you this is an absolute, but if typically with commercial building of any size or structure, you're going to have modern surveying, you're going to find that at that point. If you do any title research by a title company, they're going to find some of that overlapping. And that's usually when it ends up at this table, is when they find that they, they have something, I think the last instance, well, you're going to find it comes back to the table before a lot of new structures are built. I think a lot of the structures you're seeing are older structures that have been there for many years, back when there was less enforcement, back when there was less follow-up to what might be. The good part about it is the city cannot be adversely possessed against. So if there is an encroachment, the city council could say, "Tear that encroachment down," like it wishes to. They don't always have to turn over the land just because somebody tries to use our property. The city has the right, at any point, to decide, "We're not going to turn that over. We don't want to abandon it. We don't want to vacate it. We don't want to do whatever the process might be called at the particular moment, but we want the property emptied of the structure that you illegally built."
Well, it seems to me that the trend over the apparently last hundred and some years has been to just give it away. Okay, you've been encroached upon it, here, you just take it. So if we don't have, if we have city property and we don't know where it is, we don't know the boundaries of it, so forth, how can we prevent such things from happening? How can we anticipate all this property that's already been encroached upon, that all, that people are going to come to us? And it appears that the city councils in perpetuity have not had the wherewithal to say, "We're sorry, this is our property. You can either get your stuff off of it, or we can give you a lease or some kind of an ordinance that says that you, you may use this property until that structure goes away, and then that property goes back to the city." I mean, it seems to be, seems to me that over the past hundred and twenty-some years, it's been the, the city councils, instead of protecting the city at large and protecting the city property and keeping the city property for the city, it's been their trend to just piecemeal it away, piecemeal it away, piecemeal it away. This has happened a hundred and, this has happened a hundred and roughly one a year for the last hundred years? How much city property have we lost? How much city property are we going to lose in the next hundred years if this continues like this? We have no, we have no baseline. We have no criteria to say what we have right now and to look to the future to try to keep that, instead of just giving it away and giving it away. How can we, how can we protect the city, the city, the whole city, for all the people, instead of piecemealing it away to private individuals and private corporations? How can we protect this city?
Are you addressing me the question, or is that rhetorical?
I'm, I'm asking. Spend the money for, spend the money?
Basically, my response to you would be that that's why it comes every single time to this table to decide whether to dispose of that property. And if you're trying to enact something today to prevent all future councils from being able to give away something, that's not going to happen, because the county, the next council, the next council, and the council fifty years from now is still going to have the same statutory authority unless the state legislature removes it to act if one, either vacating property or not. And having this, a map of what is and what isn't now encroaching, I don't see how that benefits unless you intend to deal with every encroachment that you find immediately. It's not like the city has property that is being taken away by adverse possession or some other means. It's not the city losing property every time there's a change. And I did not personally review any of the hundred or more transactions that the planning commission is telling you about, but I will bet that at least a good share or a portion of those were not vacations giving away something because of encroachment. You will also find that the city at various times has sold property or otherwise disposed of other property, not because of an encroachment, but because the city no longer wanted that property, or the city traded that property for another piece of property that it was going to use for another type of structure, or otherwise disposed of it, not necessarily because of an encroachment.
One last question.
Okay, one last question.
Would it be effective in any way to, to think about and talk about perhaps having an ordinance that says that we shall, state statute says that you are allowed within certain parameters to do certain things.
Point of order, we're talking about a different, we've got a motion on the table. I don't think this is, we're talking about the discussion. She's trying to introduce a new motion here.
It's pertinent to the discussion, I believe.
Could the city clerk read the motion, please?
Excuse me. I had the floor, there was a point of order.
We're getting way ahead of ourselves here. Okay. She's in, she's in discussion with Mr. Weaver. If Mr. Weaver wants to answer her question, I'll leave it up to Mr. Weaver. We still have to deal with the motion and the second, and we will get back to that as soon as we finish our discussion, so. Actually, you're supposed to have ten minutes on one, one discussion.
Why start now?
Why start now?
Well, I'm just telling you, we talked about it before, so if, if your question's pertinent, ask it, and let Mr. Weaver answer it, then we need to move on, because it's getting a little long-winded.
Would it be appropriate or possible to pass a city ordinance that takes, takes what the state law says and takes it one step further, and says that the city councils shall not vacate properties, shall not give away properties? They shall come to another, they shall come to another agreement, like a fifty-five-year lease, or an ordinance that says these people may use this property until that structure is gone? Would that be in any way helpful in this matter?
I think that what you're talking about would probably violate the rule against perpetuities, one, which I don't want to try to explain here, because there's a whole law school class on it. But addition to that, I think that it would be impertinent of this council to impose something on all future councils if it so tried to do that, because the state law set this up so that the city can transact business when it needs to. And as I said, often these pieces of property that are vacated or are sold by the city council are often exchanges of property or disposal of property that benefits the city in some other way. Not too many years ago, I believe it was the City of Rogers exchanged a large share of some of their property with the public school district in Rogers, because they could build certain administrative buildings for the city on property that the school district had. I know that Springdale has done this repeatedly. At times, I believe they built a fire station a few years ago on property that they obtained by switch and trade. And if you were to say the city can no longer dispose of property in the future, creating a glut, if, for lack of a better word, of properties that the city can't dispose of in order to benefit the citizens, I think that that would be patently, as I said, improper to do for future, to hand tie, hogtie the hands of the future councils that may need to dispose of or otherwise deal with property rights of the city.
Okay, one last comment, and then I'm done.
Point of order.
Mr. Berry, if you said it was your last question, I can't allow you to get another one. Mr. Pownell?
I have a very simple request, whether or not Ms. Blankenship can go back to the planning commission and just write a letter back to council, putting this in the record, what, what they've determined. For example, I remember first being on planning commission, I won't mention the street or whatever, there was a deck built that encroached upon an unopened road, which was city property. There was nothing done, other than they split it down the middle, and they said, "Half of it belongs to this guy, and half of it belongs to this guy." I think since planning commission is in the process of trying to address more planning involvement in instruction, not necessarily wanting to get into each and every private home building, but I think if we just have the memo for the record and look at, while you're looking at your change to the construction ordinance changes, I think that'd be very simple, just for the record of who the they's and them's and he and she's ours.
Okay, before you make any comments, let me, any further discussion on this issue? We still have a motion on the floor and a second we have to deal with, unless it's withdrawn. So we will get to that. Ms. Bell.
As far as this council making ordinances and so forth, but hogtie future councils, isn't that what every council before us has done? Is set up codes?
Point of order. Point of order. This motion on the table, the motion on the table is as Mr. Pownell stated.
Yes, sir.
That's not germane to the discussion.
There is a motion and a second on the table, so if there's no further pertinent discussion regarding this matter, then we'll deal with the issue of the, oh, go ahead.
The planning commission asked me, and this is what they voted on to send back to you, for you, as a council, to give us specific instruction of what it was you wanted us to have surveyed and financing to do that. We really don't know how much it would cost to get everything done, but they asked me to ask you what you wanted done in a year and how much money you were willing to put out, and then we would work on that.
Thank you. No further discussion? We'll deal with the motion now. Would you please restate the motion?
Have the planning commission provide a report on the information that was discussed.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Three, two.
I didn't hear yours.
It said aye.
Okay. So four, two, and that's Parker.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we move.
Just give us the minutes.
If, yeah. All right, moving on, the number three has been postponed on the zoning map. Move this to number four, discussion of sales at city festivals. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Say again.
We'll reserve them.
I'd like for the chairman of the planning commission to make a comment on this, this item.
I'd like to just, from some of the things that were said tonight, I'd just like to explain, I wish you could have all come to the planning training that we had, because what happens is, if there's a master plan, then the planning commission is supposed to send ordinances to your table to adopt that master plan. All the things in the master plan, we recommend ordinances to you. Well, we've had a master plan for a very long time, and ordinances that have been sent, some parts of it and some parts not. So as a planning commission, as a chair, I did decide that we would start looking at ordinances that were over ten years old to see if we were still in a good place. That's how come, you know, you have weekly rentals in front of you now. There's, there's just some ordinances that have been on the books for a very long time, and we took it on. That's how come you get some things, some things you like and some things you don't. I can't help that part. But this is part of our city code 4.4801. I gave you the ordinance 1953 that put it into effect, and it just says that when we have events, but in our code, it says city-sponsored events. Evidently, when this was written in 2004, all we were going to have was city-sponsored events. In, in 2012 and 2013, our city would like to have more privately-sponsored events, but in order to have privately-sponsored events, those events also need to be able to sell their T-shirts and their water bottlings. According to our code, that's not really allowed, because our code says city-sponsored. Also in our code, it says that they get their license, their, I'm sorry, I lost it, that the permit is given from the mayor's office and CAPC or special events director, and that is not correct. Those permits come from the city clerk's office. So these are just some things that are in our code today that are incorrect, and the planning commission feels like they need to be changed. In order to get that started, then you would have to forward this to your city attorney if you believe that this is something that needs to be changed.
I sent a, an informational message to the planning commissioners to let them know that in this year alone, there have been forty-eight events that have passed through department head meetings and been approved, city and private. Each one of those is a little different. And yes, there are some things in the code that need to be corrected, that would streamline things a bit, and the people who deal with this on a day-to-day basis are interested in improving it. But it's a really complex issue, and I understand planning's desire to help clean up the code, but this is an area that I really feel strongly and have requested repeatedly that they let the people who deal with it, deal with it. And I have been talking with Chief Hyatt, and I have been talking with some other promoters about ways to streamline it. I will repeat again politely and firmly, please let the people who deal with it, deal with it. It's, it's, there's, there's too much information for folks not in the process to understand. And I've heard a couple very alarming things at the table, the planning table, because I do their minutes, that infringe on private property rights. And so I will ask again for planning to take a pause on this and let it be done by folks who do it. I understand your mission, but it's, it's really getting wobbly.
Okay.
Question to the clerk, is who are the people who deal with this?
Well, the department heads and private promoters, and Chief Hyatt, of course, oversees enforcement.
But one of the, the ordinance states, and we've just been going through this in the last hour on some other items, states specifically that it's only city-sponsored.
That part, yes, that's one of the elements.
I mean, that is, that is something that, right now, we're illegal if we're allowing permits to be issued that aren't city-sponsored.
That is one of the elements that needs to be corrected.
Who's going to correct it, if not us?
This is a, this is a workshop project for people who are involved. And yes, there is a need for, it would be ideal to change it to city-approved, and there's a, there's a rough outline to move things in the direction that the town is actually moving. But it's a real, it is a workshop project and not a planning project. It's, it's not that simple. I mean, I don't mean that rudely, but yes, there is tweaking that needs to be done.
Mr. Pownell?
Correct me if I'm wrong, and if I may address this through the chair to Ms. Blankenship. The question is tied in with the peddlers and festivals. It, the, the code that we currently have says city-sponsored events will be, those will be approved by the mayor's office and CAPC or the special events director. And I think the concern beyond, beyond, with just that right there, if you have X number of certain city-sponsored events, which I'm assuming we're talking Chocolate Fest, Corvette Weekend, whatever the case might be, and somebody wants to come in, as I saw at one of the motels whenever the classic cars were in town, they had a little canopy tent up, and they were selling classical car-type things, models, belt buckles, whatever the case might be. case might be. To me, those would be where this would apply. I think where the concern is coming from, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the allowability under the current code of the kettle corn on the corner and the crystal guy in the parking lot and those that are just trying to sell whatever they can make a living off of. And as, as far as I can see, the peddler and retail sales for city-sponsored events is very clear. Maybe we have an enforcement issue, I don't know.
No, I haven't brought you that issue yet. They're giving garage sale permits and we are going to bring that to you, but the last things that I brought to you, the ones that all got postponed tonight, we sent them from the planning table in April, in April, and I got postponed and again tonight because of what it says on your agenda. But this one is just about the events, special events. The CAPC would like to have privately-sponsored events, but our code goes against that. And our permits are not given out of the mayor's office and CAPC or special events. None, none of these permits are given there.
And we're breaking the code, right?
Correct. So this is, you know, our code is just wrong about that.
Mr. Berry, you get your hand up first.
Yeah, you know, I don't know why we can't, I understand what the problem is, and I don't think it needs a workshop. It seems to me that it's a simple item of changing from, we'll get the city attorney to, to come in with this, but instead of saying city-sponsored, basically city-approved and permitted events. And then go on down there, and if we want the clerk to issue this, then the permit from the mayor's office or designated and the CAPC or special events office, and that would take care of this if I'm not mistaken.
And I did speak to Chief Hyatt, and this is what he also told me, so.
And there is, there is a difference, Mr. Mayor. I don't think Corvette weekend is a city function.
It's not a city function.
Or the Ferraris or any of those others. So those are the private events that they're looking at, that they're trying to get in here. So it's city-approved, yes, but not city-sponsored.
Also like the Eureka, the Eureka sells t-shirts, the Eureka sells water bottles, the Eureka sells flags. So far in the past three years, the city sponsored it. Next year, it's a private event, the city's not gonna sponsor it anymore. Are they not gonna be allowed to sell their t-shirts and water bottles? If they go with our code at the moment, they shouldn't be able to.
Mr. DeBino?
I agree with Mr. Berry that city-sanctioned events instead of city-sponsored events because the impetus behind the CAPC with festivals is to provide funding for seed money for festivals for three years, and after three years, they're gonna be self-sufficient, so they're no longer sponsored by the city. So, you know, changing the words from sponsored to sanctioned, I, I think that's the way to go.
That is one of the things that would streamline it. That is one of the things that would bring it up to date. Every festival, whether it is city-sponsored or privately-sponsored, goes through department head meetings, so the CAPC is aware of it, all the departments are aware of it. I will request again that beyond that change in phrasing, that the people who have to deal with this on a regular basis make the other changes. I'm, I, with all due respect, they come to my office, there's a massive spreadsheet, everyone is a little different, one size does not fit all. I would be happy to bring a list of recommendations that are run by people who deal with it on a regular basis.
Mr. Ball?
I feel a little bit confused about all this stuff because sometimes when issues like this come up, certain members of council are all about, we gotta protect the brick and mortar people, we gotta protect the brick and mortar people, and they don't want vendors, they don't want peddlers, they don't want different things like that, but during certain events and different things, well, it's okay then. Well, it's still kind of an affront to the brick and mortar people who are there, you know, all year long, so maybe we're looking at this in the wrong way. Maybe we need to turn this over and think about it a different way. Perhaps when we have city-sanctioned events or city-sponsored events or what have you, maybe the vendors and so forth need to subcontract a space from a brick and mortar business, or maybe they need to put their, put their wares on consignment with a brick and mortar establishment. Maybe, maybe we need to turn this over and look at it a whole different way. Maybe we need to support our brick and mortar people, and, and like I said, either, either these people who want to be vendors could consign with those people, or they could have certain places in some of the antique malls or what have you around here, they could rent a booth, they, we, maybe we could do something completely different. Maybe we're looking at this, maybe we need to look at it a different way. Just throwing that out there for thought, thank you.
Mr. DeBino?
Logistics-wise, it's not practical. I don't know many merchants that would want to take in under their wing some other merchant that's got their hands full dealing with, with the products they're selling. Just like the Eureka Palooza Festival, that's out at Lake Leatherwood, so that's physically not a consideration. We have festival sites, we've been trying to get people to use Center Street as festivals. I've talked to all the merchants there, they all embrace having festivals because we understand when you get people in town, then we have a chance to sell our products. If there's no people in town, you don't have a chance to sell your products, and festivals are the way to bring people back time and time again to Eureka Springs. So I, I think from the merchant class, I think they embrace the festivals. I think as far as the permitting process, if it goes through a review of the department heads of which the CAPC is involved, I feel like that's probably a good, good avenue. I can understand the clerk's trepidations about being overwhelmed with the variety of the festivals because each one's gonna be a little different and they're all gonna have logistics and such.
I'm not overwhelmed, not even mildly. My concern is, when I hear discussion at the Planning Commission, several people at those table, at that table are endeavoring to limit the rights of people who do bring those festivals to this town. And folks who own commercial property in this town, and this is just one example, want the right to invite folks to set up, to sell wares on their property. They own the property or they're making the mortgage payments and they're paying the taxes, they do not want to be told. They want the right to have events on their private property. And that's just one element in all the discussions that have been going on. And I will say again, I feel very strongly, having dealt with this for almost two years, that the way to deal with this is for the people who deal with it to sit down together and make those fine little changes that will bring the code into the current reality. But it is far too complex and varying to have folks who don't deal with it try to make the changes because they don't, they're not able to consider the long-term consequences for any little change they make. It sounds good.
Clarification, who are those people you're talking about?
Planning.
But it has to, it has to ultimately end up with us, regardless of what planning decides. It's our decision, so don't, don't lay this on planning. They're doing the best they can. It's gonna come to this table.
Okay, well, 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 let's, let's slow down.
Excuse me, speaking about a topic is not laying something on someone. I am expressing a concern.
Point of order, point of order. No offense to the clerk, but that's not germane to the discussion.
Watch your, the way you talk then, okay? I'm not laying any, any money.
Stop. Okay. Now, let's get back to what we're taking care of here, and that's number four. There's been no recommendations other than what Ms. Ball has made, as to looking at it from a different point of view. Berry?
I did make a recommendation.
Okay. So that's one, that's two. You're gonna have to come up with a decision here in just a few minutes of what action to take, so you might be considering that, yes, Mary?
I'm trying, I'm trying to clarify what we're looking for, and I think it's kind of multi-wrapped because of the way emails have been showing up and phone calls have been showing up and this type of thing. I heard that the Classic Car Weekend was not a city-sponsored event. Is that a true statement or not? Or was it a special event?
It was Corvette Weekend.
It's private.
It's a private one, I believe.
Yeah.
Code says for special events is defined as use of a public street, right-of-way sidewalk or parking lot, which Classic Car Weekend would have been installation of a banner within the public right-of-way or outdoor entertainment. And they shall get a special event permit obtained from the office of the mayor and signed by the mayor and the city clerk. Then you reverse engineer that and go back to see what, whether or not they can sell something. If they want to read the code after they've got their special event permit, fine. I don't know if that will help address the problem or not. You know, I, I can understand the, you know, freedom of, of free enterprise, but as I had a discussion with a gentleman a long time ago in regards to yard sales on private property that are being rotated, whether it's by name or group or whatever, and, and I think I offended him when I asked him if he had a business license because he had vacant property that he was making money off of by allowing those people to apply for permits, whether they did or didn't. So I just want to make sure that we're addressing under sales at city festivals because city festivals is mentioned in the current code, 4.48, peddlers and solicitors, whether I'm jumping the gun or not, it says city festival sales. So I don't know what, what we're trying to change, discuss, or clarify.
Make sure. Any further? Let's not bet.
Yeah, I make a motion that the city clerk come to us with, give us her list of suggestions by our next meeting.
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion is the head of the city clerk to come to the council with her recommendations, and there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Two I didn't hear.
Aye. No, no, no.
Mr. Pownell, yours was a no, yours was a no, and yours was a no, so it's three, three?
Yes.
Glory be, I never thought it'd happen. I'm leaving for a five, a ten-minute break.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten-minute break.